Eight four acres plus or minus into eighteen single-family lots to be located on a certain parcel of land lying and being in Broadkill Hundred, Sussex County. The property is lying on the west side of Roundpole Bridge Road, which is Sussex County Route 257, approximately 0.48 mile west of Hudson Road, which is Sussex County Route 258. The tax parcel ID is District 235, MAP 15, Parcel 34.00. The zoning district is AR1 Agricultural Residential Zoning District. Submitted into the record, Mr. Chairman, we have a copy of the applicant's preliminary subdivision plan, we have a copy of the applicant's exhibit booklet, including the applicant's Chapter 99-9C response, we have a copy of the applicant's drainage assessment and assessment report, including the county's engineering department's response to this, we have a copy of the applicant's soil feasibility report, we have a copy of the staff analysis, we have a copy of the notice of decision for the previous subdivision application, which is 2020-08, we have a copy of the written responses from the technical advisory committee, including a response from the Delaware Electric Co-op, Delaware Department of Transportation, the State Historic Preservation Office, Sussex County Engineering Department Utility Planning Division, the Denrec Division of Watershed Stewardship, the State Department of Public Health, and the United States Department of Agriculture, and I would note that there are three written comments, and they are included in your paperless packets, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Gentlemen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Wheatley, fellow commissioners, Director Whitehouse, Mr. Robertson, and staff and public. This light is on. My name is Fred Townsend, I'm with the law firm of Hudson Jones, J. Work &amp; Fisher in Lewis. I represent this applicant who joins me this afternoon. I've got with me Mr. Lockwood, Don Lockwood, who's the beneficial owner of record of the property, he's here, and a key member of our project team, Carlton Savage of Scaled Engineering. So my intent during this process is to give a brief history of the proposals, plural, to develop this property, as well, of course, as an overview of the Lockhaven development as currently presented, which involves tax map parcel number 23515-34, currently consisting of 81.84 acres. The proposal, as you are aware, is to develop this site into eighteen dwelling sites, each of which average, or I should say, the average of which is 2.5 acres, the smallest being 1.81 acres. And that's going to be a theme as I go through, the relative lack of intensity of development on this parcel, and I would ask you to take that into consideration as we go through the process. Thank you. This is an AR1 zone property with road frontage along Roundpole Bridge Road. It's lying in the vicinity of a man-made lagoon off of the Broadkill River to the north and along its western boundary, the Beaver Dam Creek that feeds the Broadkill. This project is unlike others you've heard recently and as recently as this afternoon. This project does not involve a cluster development, which would, of course, allow for a much more dense residential development than what's being proposed here today. This development offers 25.22 acres of open space, 31% of the site is open space, about 17 acres and change of that is passive open space, and the rest consists of wetlands of both title and non-title nature. This project has been reviewed thoroughly by the planning staff, and I can represent that it's compliant with the county's comprehensive plan as well as applicable ordinances as it involves the development for single-family detached dwellings. Specifically, it is compliant with your relatively newly enacted resource protection buffer requirements from 2022. In fact, you have among the items in your file a product that, while I can't take any credit for it personally, we're quite proud of, which is the Resource Protection Plan. I don't think there are many for people to model that have gone through the process yet, and I think the one that has been presented in this case is very thorough, and I hope you will agree with me in that regard. As you may know, certain of you were on the planning commission back in 2021, 2020, others are new. I think by now everyone knows that this site was proposed for a residential subdivision back in 2020 and ultimately did not go forward with an approval. What I'd like, and this map is fine for purposes of what I'd like to mention now, is just to point out that while I don't want to focus a great deal of our attention, I don't want to confuse things by using images from the prior plan, but I can say this, that the prior plan was subjected to in certain regards. The main one, I believe, in my estimation, was that the open space was located in the center of the property, running from its entrance, as you see at the bottom, back and to the right, and around the open space was a loop of a drive. And I don't think there was anything wrong with that in particular, except that it had the effect of forcing all the dwelling sites to the perimeter. And it's the perimeter, particularly to the north, where the wooded area lies. And by pushing the dwellings away from the center of the property on both sides, you were, or we were potentially causing the loss of more trees than was deemed to be appropriate at the time. Another issue that we ran up against was a building consensus at the time that wetlands should not be subdivided. So while the plan we submitted was consistent with the law at the time, since then, there has been an ordinance that's passed that makes it inappropriate to subdivide wetlands. There are wetlands on this property to the north, you can see them in shades of blue, and they're running along that Beaver Dam Creek, as I mentioned. This plan does not propose to subdivide wetlands. So the open space is being relocated to the north in the areas that are shown in color along the top of the development, and that has the effect of allowing us to create these lots, which are large, still large, but don't involve the subdivision of the areas that require protection. And a presumption of that is, or a concern, I think, at the time was, that if the home sites were pushed back and the wetlands were individually owned, there might be some built-in incentive from an individual lot owner to make more use of his or her lot than would be deemed appropriate, given the presence of the wetlands. So by designating those areas as open spaces, we now are removing that incentive, people being, human nature being what it is, now we've got a homeowners association who is better able to police the use of property that is, in fact, owned by the community rather than owned by individuals. Next, I'd like to mention that the, another criticism that we fielded, particularly from the neighbors on Roundpole Bridge Road, was a concern about lots that would be exposing their rear yards and the rear of the homes to Roundpole Bridge Road. That was not thought of as being consistent or compatible with other home sites along or in the area, and it was deemed to be suboptimal by people who would rather look at the front of a home as they travel up and down the road than the back. The back, of course, is where oftentimes more of the use of the yard takes place, and for obvious reasons, that was a concern. So how has that been addressed? Well, it's been addressed in this plan in the fashion of having affected a minor subdivision along the front of Roundpole Bridge Road, which I'm happy to talk about before we're through here, in which the road frontage now is devoted to one lot on the, or two lots on the left of the proposed entrance, one on the right, and then residual lands to the right of that. So that will have the effect of orienting the homes that ultimately get built in those locations towards Roundpole Bridge Road and eliminating that concern. So this is a superior plan with respect to that criticism. I mentioned the minor subdivision. The minor subdivision also included an area at the end of the cul-de-sac that you see before you. So the minor subdivision created the three lots along Roundpole Bridge Road, the residual lands, which are part of the overall project right now before it's subdivided with your cooperation. And then there is an easement that runs back to a lot in the back that comes off of the end of the cul-de-sac. That lot is, I believe, 36 acres in size. That lot was also part of the minor subdivision for a particular reason. Back in 2021, when we were hopeful of receiving the approval for the preliminary plan, the beneficial owner of the LLC was very interested and remains very interested in making that a home site for he and his wife and family. And then additionally, the, I believe it's the lot to the extreme left along Roundpole Bridge Road, has been targeted by one of the children of Don and Carrie Lockwood for a home site for her. So those, no shovels have turned soil over at this point, but I can tell you that the minor subdivision was a topic that was brought first to the attention of the planning office. It was a subject of a meeting in the context of the overall development of the property and whether it would have any adverse legal impact on it. And based on those meetings, the minor subdivision was deemed to be an appropriate avenue for the Lockwoods to consider developing those two areas at their own pace prior to the adoption or prior to the eventual approval, hopefully, of the subdivision. Of course, a lot has happened since 2021, much of it has made the cost of money more expensive and has put for many of us plans to make investments of that size on hold. So it's for those reasons that the home at the end of the cul-de-sac has not been commenced, and a home site along Roundpole Bridge Road has not been commenced, but good faith efforts were underway at the time. In fact, I believe it's appropriate to say that soil testing was done and approvals were granted by Denrec for the location of septic systems on those sites. I mentioned septic systems because this property will be served by individual septics and individual wells. As far as the soils are concerned, many of the soils would be appropriate, particularly along the western boundary for standard septic systems. Engineered systems will no doubt be employed on some of the lots, we're not sure how many, but they are not all going to be deemed to be feasible for standard systems. I would like to, just from a 10,000-foot level, say that the wetlands and tree preservation are being, those issues are being preserved and protected, those resources are being preserved and protected with this plan. Hopefully, many fewer trees will be disturbed as a result of moving the open space to the western boundary as opposed to in the center. Del Dot has indicated to us that naturally because of the relatively few sites that are being sought, that the impact will be negligible on our public roads. Again, that's a recurring theme as I go through, if you'll allow me, the 99-9C considerations that this commission applies in the course of scrutinizing any application. The integration of proposed subdivision into existing terrain and surrounding landscape is Sub 1. Again, there's considerably less site work, less disturbance, and less lot coverage that results from a plan like this than would result from a cluster subdivision. There's going to be a lot less earth moved, there's going to be much less lot coverage on 18 sites of averaging 2.5 acres than you would find if you were really moving a lot of soil around to create amenities and home sites that numbered multiples of these. It's a consideration of yours that minimal use of wetlands and floodplains be made in the course of a development like this. They're, again, protected. Floodplains are not being infringed or encroached upon in the course of development of this plan to the extent that it would be possible to do so were this a cluster development rather than a traditional one. Preservation of natural and historic features, I'm not aware of any historic features, natural features. Again, the area to the north, the waterways are protected, the trees, the buffering is significant on a plan like this and compares favorably to a non-traditional cluster development. Open space and scenic views are promoted by this plan. The scenic views to the north and particularly to the west along the stream will be accessible to all the residents of the community because the open space is located there as opposed to, again, as it was originally proposed to be located years ago in the center of the development. That is a very significant change in terms of making those views available to all the residents as opposed to subdividing those lands and restricting access just to the owners and their guests. Again, as I mentioned, less disturbance, less tree removal, less, you know, the area in the center of the property has been farmed, it's been tillable for a very long time, so vegetation in those areas is not, you know, is not desirous of preservation, but the buffering areas to the west are actually, I believe, three acres larger, many more square feet, equalling three acres larger than is minimally required. As far as screening objectionable features from neighboring properties and roadways, I'm not aware of any objectionable features. I can say again, less development means less impact visually to a passerby, fewer units located a great, you know, a significant distance away from the road will have a minimal impact on roadways. And it's also going to have a minimum impact on roadways, as I'd indicated, due to the fewer number of trips that you can expect on and off the property, given its relative modest size. The provision of, from the water supply and sewage disposal were, are considerations of yours, and I mentioned that individual septics and wells will be that source. As far as your number, your ninth consideration, preservation of pollution, or excuse me, prevention of pollution and surface, preservation of, prevention of pollution on this surface and groundwater is addressed, again, by SCD, who will approve the, any stormwater drainage facilities, or the stormwater drainage facilities, which you can see located there to the west. There's a large pond that's located there, and, again, less disturbance to the ground is going to result in less of a stormwater issue than you would have in a cluster subdivision with more coverage, more pavement, and the like. Internally, we don't have significant concerns about vehicular and pedestrian movement because of the few number of homes. We're not, it should not be a highly trafficked area, it should not be an area that generates unsafe conditions. In terms of the preservation, conservation of farmland in these rural areas, it might be typical that you would see larger lots, acre lots, and larger lots that are developed with a single home, not part of a major subdivision. This development is much more consistent with that type of development than would be a cluster subdivision. So I would submit that item 13 of your Section 99 considerations cuts in favor of this application. Effect on schools, public buildings, and community facilities is also minimal, again, for the same reason. I apologize for repeating myself so often, but these are considerations that should be addressed in the record. The effect on roadways, public transportation should be minimal for the reasons stated. Compatibility with other land uses, I would submit that a development such as this, 18 sites on lots averaging two and a half acres, with the smallest being 1.81, is more compatible. It's a use that's permitted, and this permitted use is more compatible than it might otherwise be. And again, given your, the passage of your Section 193 buffering requirements, your final consideration is addressed in this plan because the buffering that you see has been reviewed and I would submit is compliant with Section 193, and that valuable and important resource is protected through the buffering that, again, as I pointed out previously, exceeds the minimum square footage that's required. So at this point, I'd like to ask if there are any questions for me. I'll remind you that I have Mr. Savage with me, who is going to be more well-positioned to answer specific questions about the engineering of the site.
All right, sir, we thank you. We'll see if anyone on the commission has any questions for you, and we'll start with Mr. Collins.
Thank you. I'm curious, you're talking about the HOA potentially governing the open space. Given the environmentally sensitive nature of some of this land, had you considered, you know, conservation easement or some other form of protecting that going forward?
We're certainly open to any suggestions in terms of how to better arm the HOA against what would amount to trespass if someone were to enter those open spaces designated as open spaces and do damage. So while the property, while the buffered areas are able to be utilized as passive open space, 17 or so acres of them, that will be highly regulated, and the Resource Protection Plan, I think, is very thorough. However, there would be absolutely no built-in opposition to considering any other appropriate mechanism for making sure that those resources are protected.
Okay, so if that were a condition of approval, that would not be a problem.
So when you say conservation easement, that's a...
There are some other options, right? But ways of protecting those lands in perpetuity beyond, you know, any change in land ownership?
Oh, you mean as, in terms of, like, farmland preservation? This might be some of the conversation we could have offline with staff between...
If you could talk to the staff about the different options that are available to preserve the land and protect it with more teeth, that would be great.
We'd be happy to do that. We have absolutely no reason to push back against that kind of a consideration. Thank you.
I think that's a valid point, Mr. Collins, because so often we see that they're going to preserve the land behind, and then the property owner goes out there and clears whatever they want to to get their view.
Yes, that's where the fire pit goes. You know, we've seen the pictures of the fire pits and the seating areas with patio favors, so.
And just the creeping, the tendency to creep inch by inch. Yes, so that would be prohibited. Question is, are there ways to make those prohibitions more enforceable? And we'd certainly be open to that. And as I pointed out, the area at the end of the cul-de-sac is still very much projected to be the home site for the owner. And I think with that comes a certain amount of investment in the project, such that the project should be built out in an appropriate fashion and a way that protects his investment as well as is compliant with the restrictions which we're subjected to. So thank you for that suggestion.
Mr. Butler?
No questions, sir. I think Scott was referring to like a conservation easement or something like that.
Yes, thank you. Lingi?
I just have one question, maybe you already answered this and I didn't get it. The, in the staff analysis for the four lots that were previously approved, so Del Dot had a comment that lots two and three could be impacted. It looks like you have your entranceway there anyway, so you've already taken that into consideration, I'm assuming, with the amount of lot that's going to be left for building.
So, yes, it's my understanding that, and it might be best if I just made a quick visit to the screen.
Yep.
I want to just call your attention there and Those are two entrances meant to serve the four lots, and I think Del Dot has indicated that those would be appropriate to serve those lots.
With the access for the development in between lot two and three, like it's shown on the plan, yes?
Right, so if Del Dot's approval at this point were to stand up, then there would not ultimately be a need for access off of the main avenue, if you will, to the middle lots, because those two entrances I just pointed to would serve both lots.
Right, okay. Thank you, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Mr. Mears?
No questions, sir.
Okay, staff, anything? Mr. Wainell?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just a quick technical question, most likely from Mr. Savage. Before I ask my question, though, I do wish to applaud Mr. Savage's team for the use of color in the buffer averaging. This is relatively new, and it did make the assessment a lot easier. My question is in relation to buffer averaging, because we do have lots, and using the orange color, we can see those lots that are within the tidal zone B, and buffer averaging allows you to average into zone B. But I guess my question is, and just when I enlarge the drawing and look very closely, I could see the non-tidal wetlands have all the survey flags showing that they were surveyed as part of the survey that was reported. they were surveyed as part of the survey that was reported in 2022. My question is, if I may, the, the, the blue is the title, correct? And has that been surveyed? Because there was a note on the plan saying that this information and all of this averaging was based on online maps, so.
Thank you, Jamie. For the record, my name is Carlton Savage. I'm a professional registered engineer, uh, in the state of Delaware with scaled engineering. I will try to answer the best I can, the wetlands questions. I am not a wetlands professional, but I deal with them quite a bit and really dealt with them a lot on this plan. We are surrounded by wetlands on this plan, and we have tried to preserve, much like Mr. Collins said, we've, we've put them in buffers, you know, so in our eyes, we have preserved them forever. Uh, we understand there's the possibility that a homeowner down the road could do something illegal. I think you actually have fines in place if they do that. But if there's a better way of doing it, we're up for it. So if you can zoom in, Jamie, kind of on the down, the bottom left corner, I'll try to explain, maybe keep zooming. Move up just a little bit. Oh, sorry, down a little bit. The other up. Okay, yeah, so right there, I'll try to explain this. So the scale of this plan is what makes it difficult. It is a very large piece of property, um, and we are subdividing it into large format style lots. But it is hard to realize what these areas look like. So if you look here, the, the top line that says tidal wetland limit, that is actually a line that comes from the state of Delaware, and that line itself is not something that you delineate. That is a regulatory line by the state of Delaware for tidal wetlands. The next line down is the first 50 feet of that buffer. So that darker blue color is the first 50 feet. That can't be touched, that has to be there mandated, that is what that is. The next, that's zone A. Zone B, that lighter blue color, is the next 50 feet or zone B. That, that zone there can be buffered, um, by using other resources of the same in, in that, in that condition. So the green area, which overlaps some of the rest, is the next 100 feet, which is the area you're allowed to buffer average in. So we've actually, I think, overachieved by 130 some thousand, uh, square feet, because why not take advantage of all the buffering and provide as much conservation as possible? Outside of that, you get no actual credit for buffer averaging, although I assume there will be extra trees remaining, because it's not a lot. Why wouldn't HOA go in there and clear trees? The, there is also a delineated wetland here. Uh, the delineated wetland has the little wetland flags that you're used to seeing. Uh, those, those little wetland flags were actually marked in the field, and our survey team captured those marks. So that's where it says non-tidal wetland limits. Now, it is interesting with this plan, I think it has to do a lot with the way the, I think there are 1980 some maps to the state, the 1980 maps, and actually what's there today. Um, you have a couple crisscrosses between the two. Um, those crisscrosses somewhat follow, they're, they're going to follow topography, basically, is how that works. But you do have a non-tidal wetland limit that was flagged and located. That non-tidal limit is outside of the jurisdiction of the state. So that becomes your Army Corps regulated wetland. That Army Corps regulated wetland is what is required to have a, um, a 30-foot buffer attached to it. So the, the first lighter yellow color is the first 15 feet, the next orange color is the 30-foot. We did not choose to buffer that, or average buffer that one at all. And you'll notice that we kept outside of the, outside of that, um, the whole entire way. So we feel that we've achieved, I think staff reviewed it, it was something that I had never done until this plan. So it's, uh, was new, happened 18 months ago, directly after you implemented new ordinance. But it does make it tough. It's easier to see when you really zoom in what you're dealing with. Um, this property, though, is adjacent to both tidal and non-tidal wetlands. So those, I think that's what enables you, you, if you back up to a non-tidal wetland, you can do the buffer averaging.
Great, thank you.
Does that clarify?
Good stuff.
What was it?
Okay. Good stuff. Great, great explanation.
I'm glad he clarifies it for you, Mr. Whitehouse. Yes, sir?
Okay, Mr. Robertson, anything?
No, I, that, it's helpful, and to everybody's credit that's been involved in this, this is one of the first ones that we've had to deal with. And it gets a little interesting where you have two different types of resources that have two different types of buffers, and so which one is the most upland one is the, you know, and, and all that, and if they crisscross, it makes it even more complicated. So, I mean, that'll be something that, should you all act favorably on it, you know, would certainly be worked out and verified and everything else is part of final, so.
All right then, thank you. If you'll take a seat nearby, we'll see if there's anyone here that has an interest in your application. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of subdivision 2023-05 Lock Haven?
I'm Janet Ledigaville. I live on Roundpole Bridge Road, across from the proposed, uh, development here. And I know that this is the first one since the new regulations, and that may be why in the documentation, the numbers of the wetlands are off on several different documents. In the Exhibit 1, this document, which I will give to Mr. Whitehouse, says there's going to be 218 lots and 117 acres of open space. In this other document by Scaled Engineering, um, it calls for 12.46 total acres of wetlands, 8.28 acres of tidal, and 4.18 acres of non-tidal. 100% of the wetlands will be, will remain undisturbed and protected by a resource protection buffer, a net developable, developable area of 69.39 acres. So that's another, um, and then in your other documents, you have, uh, and yet another, another number. So I'd like to say, I did speak with my neighbors, and 18 lots is a whole lot better than 200 lots. What I'm asking for the commission to take a look at is, um, the three docks that are in lots 11, 12, and 13, are they going to be for public use? Are they going to be for this development use? Are they only going to be used for lots 11, 12, and 13? Because those docks, you'll have to walk through the wetlands to build the docks. So if you have docks there, the wetlands are going to be walked through and over and destroyed, et cetera. I'm going to ask the commission to consider, even though there was a soil study done, should there be 18 septic permits, one for each lot? And I'll get back to that. Um, the, Del Dot paperwork says that how, you have to have an inner, um, an inside road for this development. So how are you going to do that if lots two and three are going to have a major road right through this? We would like, the residents of Roundpole Bridge Road would like those homes in lot 1, 2, and 3 to face Roundpole Bridge Road, but if, I think I heard the attorneys say they're going to access their homes from the back road, behind where, on the-
I think, I think the testimony was that the lots, the, the four lots out front, each, each share a, a, an entrance, uh, onto Roundpole Bridge Road. So it appears that they're going to be accessed from Roundpole Bridge Road, not from, not from the, the, the back.
Okay, so in, in Del Dot's paperwork in the packet, general note number three indicates that if the residual lands of the applicant are ever developed into a major subdivision, which this is, then the access to the parcel created by this minor subdivision, division plan may be required to have access from an internal subdivision street. That's on lands of Lock Haven Farm LLC, page 1.
I think the key, the key there, that it says maybe, apparently that they, they maybe, they may have considered that, but now they have decided that this is a better way to do it.
Okay, and another staff review says that there are 73.56 acres of developable land. So there's three paperworks in the packet with all different numbers, okay?
Well, I think it's, I think it's still 18 lots, whether, so.
Um, it would be nice to have an, a third party come out and do another calculation of zone A and B, so we get the right number. And again, the docks, are they public? Are they for only those lots 10, 11, and 12? Are the, is the whole community going to use them? The Beaver Dam Creek is very low. Um, the Broadkill River is very low, and you can only go at high tide. You will get stuck. And we have a boat, and we've been to both, okay? Kayaking, yes, jet skis, yes, but motorboating, unless they dredge, which they would have to get permission from the Army Corps of Engineering. Lot 7 appears is almost entirely in the flood zone. That lot should be moved somewhere else. Um, for the record, I never received a mailer, even though the document said that the residents within 200 feet were to receive a mailer, I never received one. To protect the wetlands, both tidal and non-tidal, I would ask that no walking trails be permitted by the HOA through any of the wetlands, because what's going to happen is they're going to get wider and wider and wider, and people will walk their pets, and then to put picnic tables and everything like that. So perhaps signs behind each home that that area is not to be disturbed, and that no docks be built, because that would, will be the next thing, that would, everybody wants to put their boat in the water, and they've got waterfront in their backyard. I would also ask the commission that a condition of approval, that homeowners are not to use any, any chemical lawn type of lawn care, mosquito spray, or anything containing glyph, glyphosate, chemical herbicide, insecticide, limer, any other poisonous substance that could potentially run off into the waterways of the Broadkill River and the Beaver Dam Creek, and essentially everywhere else. I ask for the buffer that 75% of native trees and shrubs be used for planting in the community, um, and no non-native trees such as Bradford pears. Also, around the storm management pond, plant a species of milkweed, such as swamp weed, which is the main source of food for monarch butterflies. Um, the stormwater pond is completely in the flood zone, too. That is a concern. So I'm, I'm not an engineer, but after reading this, that just doesn't seem like a good place for a stormwater pond, because once we have a full moon and high tide, you're going to be full in this, and then the roads are going to flood, okay? Also, lot 7, as I said, is completely in the flood zone, or almost entirely in the flood zone, so that should be re-engineered. I, so I do, I do suggest taking out the docks completely, because if three houses have them, the other guys are going to want them too. The, in the application, the review of Delaware Division of Historical Cultural Affairs states that there were three possible structures located within the project, and they recommend an archaeological study prior to ground disturbance, which has already happened, because Mr. Lockwood dumped about 100 dump truck loads full of dirt to create the berm before this application was even submitted. So I ask that an archaeological study is done to see if there are any, um, anything that, any structures or any artifacts that need to be preserved. I think the residual, residual lot that's on Roundpole Bridge Road was answered, I think he said that was for his daughter to build. I was worried that that was going to be a parking lot, because on the plot plan, it says residual lands, and it's kind of directly right for the docks. And I thought, that looks like a parking lot, it's going to be used for people to access. But I think he said that that was for his daughter. Also, to note, if this is approved, that it is an active hunting range. Mr. Brian Reed owns this area behind it. It's used by trappers and duck hunters. Steel shot can travel up to 300, 200 feet. Homeowners should be informed of active hunting. Um, he also asked me to say, future residents are not to discharge firearms 100 yards or 300 feet of any occupied dwelling. Um, my other neighbor is a Del Dot engineer. Her comments are, um, the building restriction lines, including future septic systems, should be placed outside of the 100-year floodplain, and ideally outside of the 500-year floodplain. Lot 3 has almost no buildable area outside of the 500-year floodplain. Lot 4 should be amended to be outside of the resource protection zone. If you look at lot 4, most of it is in that blue, light blue and green area. So you're actually selling somebody a portion of a land that they can't even use. She also mentioned, as I said, the stormwater management pond is located entirely in the floodplain, and half of it's in the 100-year floodplain. As I said, our neighbors and, and I believe 18 lots is beautiful compared to 200 lots, and we need more communities like this. And there is a need for people that want to have a two-acre lot or more, farmettes, a horse, whatever. But really, I ask that you take a look at this, because the numbers of the acreage of the tidal wetlands and zone A and zone B, they're so conflicting in the paperwork, it, it's mentioned different numbers at different times. Um, and since Carlton, the engineer, said that this is the first one under the new regulations, and this is the first time he did it, maybe we do need another set of eyes on this to make sure we get this right, because this will set a precedent for any other property that is bordered by tidal wetlands and non-tidal wetlands. So I ask that you consider all of the items, I hope I didn't forget anything, I talked to all my neighbors today, and I ask that you consider all of these items, and if they conform to Section 99(c) of the County Code, and I thank you very much, you're all still here and well, and it's-
Can I address your floodzone comments? I think you could, um, relieve your concerns if you went on the county map and clicked on the floodzone layer. You'd see most of eastern Sussex County wouldn't be buildable if, if we stopped building.
I, I-
A floodzone just, it changes how a structure is built. The first floor has to be above a certain benchmark, water has to pass through the foundation. It doesn't mean a lot is unbuildable.
I already checked with Denrak, and they will permit a septic permit to be located in a floodzone. And with all the weather events that we're seeing now-
I just think you'd be amazed if you went on the map and clicked on the floodzone layer and saw how eastern Sussex County is mostly floodzones.
Yeah, I, I, I see it all over.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would just add one thing, too, because you bring up a good point. I think we're all in agreement on this, and this is, it's not the first one we've seen with the resources and resource buffers, but it's the first one that's, I guess, maybe more complicated than, than what we've seen. So, um, again, I appreciate, I think we all appreciate your comments, we appreciate the efforts that the applicant team has made. But on top of that, it's going to be one of the first ones that our county engineering department is really going to take a close look at to make sure that everything lines up the way it's supposed to be. As much, it's important to make sure it's accurate, but it also, I think, ma'am, you said it, and, and Afkin said it, and maybe Mr. Whitehouse said it, it does, it sets the tone for how we're going to do these going into the future as well. And, you know, we, we want to make sure, particularly on one that's more complicated than others, that we get it right. So there's going to be plenty of eyeballs on it, you know?
Yeah, because if those houses are built, and we get the 100-year floodplain next year, they're going, who are they going to look at? Thank you, and I'm going to drop off the discrepancy for Mr. Whitehouse.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition? Or anyone on the commission has any questions? Hey, there being none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll advise you remain with us the rest of the evening, see if we make a decision. Indeed.
Thank you.
Uh, our next item was subdivision 2023-05 Lock Haven.
So this one, I, it is, it's unique, because we have tidal and non-tidal resources on it, and there's different types of buffers on that. And we don't, I don't think we need to hold the record open, but that's something that, um, you know, we're- I would want to run that by county engineering just to make, not that I'm saying it's wrong, but just to make sure we have it right, you know? The other thing that was a little bit unique about it is that the buffer, the only buffers that really count are the ones that are the nearest the uplands, you know? So if there's title wetlands and then non-title wetlands, you don't worry about the buffers from the interior title wetlands, because that's absorbed by the non-title wetlands, if that's making sense. So we've just got to make sure that all the averaging's done right in the lines, we're done right, and they're delineated correctly, so.
Are we sure we don't need to leave the record open for county engineering to weigh in and review?
Well, if you want to be safe on that, we can definitely do that. You know, you can hold the record open for county engineering's detailed review.
I think they're going to do it anyways, right? So...
Yeah, but I'd rather have it now versus...
At a time?
Yeah. Particularly because this is an early one, you know? And I know staff had some concerns about that.
I will say, I was looking at the math, too, and thinking, how does this work? But I had to get my phone out and use my calculator, and I came up with the same totals of planning as they're...
Yeah. It's not so much the totals, it's more the lines and where they're located, just to make sure that's right.
But I mean, just like her questioning the totals.
Yeah.
Because I was looking at that, too, and I, but I came out with the same thing that we staffed at, so.
That's right. And make sure everything's delineated correctly, you know?
Agreed.
Versus just pulled off a map, that sort of thing, so.
So...
I don't think any of that showstoppers, it's just making sure we have it right.
Agreed.
Do you see deferring action, leaving the record open for engineering review?
That is my motion. I move that we, for 2023-05 Lock Haven, that we defer action and hold the record open for 10 days, 10 business days.
Well, I wouldn't want to bind county engineering on that.
No, that's not them, just until we get it.
Yeah, for their review, as soon as possible.
We'll hold the record open for county engineering review and input as soon as possible.
A second motion.
The movement's seconded to defer action on subdivision 2023-05 Lock Haven, leaving the record open for county engineering to review as soon as possible. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, thanks.